May first, twenty twenty three Borough Council meeting to order. First on the agenda of the invitation will be done by Julie Monday. Please rise.
Will you bow your head as I pray? Dear God, thank you on behalf of all who are gathered here today. Thank you for your many and abundant blessings. Thank you for the ability to be involved in useful work on behalf of the citizens of Sauterton. I pray for our mayor, for the various levels of borough officials, and in particular for this assembled council. I am asking that you would graciously grant us to have the wisdom to govern amid the conflicting interests and issues of our times, the sense of the true needs of citizens of Sauterton, and the ability that we may work together in harmony even when there is honest disagreement. I pray for the agenda set before us today. Please give an assurance of what would please you and what would benefit those who live and work in and around our beloved borough of Sauterton. In Jesus Christ we pray, amen.
What did we do?
To the flag of the United States of America and choose the Republic which sustains, one nation under God indivisible with liberty and justice for all.
Your secretary can do a little call. Tracy Burke. Edward Huber here. Matthew Danana here. Darrell Littlefield here. Julie Mundon.
Here.
Donna Rockton.
Yeah.
Matthew Shawley.
Here.
Richard Walzer.
Here.
And Cortez Womble.
Here.
Consideration of minutes, do I have a motion? To approve the minutes from the single zone regular council meeting.
Mr. President, I make a motion to approve the April third of twenty twenty three regular Borough Council meeting. Mr. Vice President.
Second.
I'll second.
Any discussion, any correction? Hearing none? All in favor?
Aye.
Vote. Consideration of the minutes from the April seventeenth twenty twenty three Borough Council Work Session Meeting.
Mr. Vice President, I make a motion to approve the April seventeenth twenty twenty three Borough Council Work Session Meeting.
You have a second.
I'll second.
Any discussion, like directions? Hearing none? All in favor? Aye.
Aye.
Any vote?
All right, Mr. Mayor. Thank you, Mr. Vice President. We have a, an exciting, another exciting edition of our key to the Borough presentation. I've seen some prepared remarks that I would never raise the stage of the Montgomery Theater. Picture in Sauterton in nineteen ninety-three. The town looked very different, far from the hub of new business and excitement that we're in today. Tom Quinn and Hope the Friends had a vision, a live theater in the heart of downtown Sauter. Making creative use of the old Sauterton firehouse, Tom, Hope, and countless other volunteers and visionaries established the Montgomery Theater, transforming Sauterton's hollow into a regional destination and bringing an energy to the town that it had not seen for decades. And now thirty years later, the Montgomery Theater has become an institution. Dramas, comedies, musicals, children productions, movie premieres and more have all graced the stages of the Montgomery Theater. The theater was a trailblazer in putting Sauterton on the map. As our community currently rides a wave of revitalization, we owe a deep debt of gratitude to Tom and Hope for seeing a vision and taking a gamble on this town long before so many others did. The Montgomery Theater also has a long established partnership with Sauterton Borough, which is something you really just don't see in many other places. It's a testament to the commitment and creative thinking of past and present members of this governing body who have spent more than three decades bringing Sauterton to where we are today. In fact, former mayor and first lady John and Laurie Reynolds are being honored at the thirtieth anniversary celebration for their long time and continued contributions to the Montgomery Theater. Almost exactly thirty year, exactly thirty years to the day, the Montgomery Theater opened its doors to patrons from the Sauterton area and beyond and continue to delight audiences decades later. Thank you, Tom and Hope, for your incredible passion and dedication. Thank you for providing culture and a touch of class to our town. Thank you for bringing joy to the thousands of patrons who have sat in your seat and thank you for your continued commitment to the community in which you saw so much potential for it three decades ago. So for all your incredible contributions to Sauterton and in honor of the thirtieth anniversary of the Montgomery Theater, we would like to honor Tom and Hope tonight with a key to Sauterton Borough. Thank you. You get this. Well, you can take a look. You get to take a picture with this. That's like a big pony check. Like a check. Are you inviting me to say something?
All right, two very important people to Montgomery Theater have come with me, of course. Co-founder and my wife, Hope DeFrane, and then our managing director and our associate artistic director, Kristen Heckler, has also joined us and they are both brilliant. Well, Kristen is the, I'm the artistic director, so I handle the art decisions. She handles the business decisions, although as associate artistic director, she also has a major say in artistic decisions. Hope is what I call our safety net. Anything goes wrong, she's there to grab and to carry, so. Something that I didn't write down in my notes was that when we first started to open, when we planned like we were going to open the theater in Sauter, and people say, Sauter, are you kidding me? You're opening a theater in Sauter? Of all places, you chose Sauter. I said, are you, you're kidding me? I said, we're in the hotbed of pharmaceutical companies. There's master's degrees all over the place. Where do these people go? I mean, but this is an intelligent community. Where do these people go for entertainment? Are they going to go to the city? Are they going to go to New York? They can go in their backyard and we can provide them something that's equally as, as good. So thirty years later, I think, I think we made an okay decision. First of all, I want to thank Borough Council, Council President, and of course, Mayor Dan for having us here. This is a, a great honor. Thirty years, that's, that's right. Yesterday is the day we took occupancy, April thirtieth. So today marks the first full day. That, you know, this is our birthday essentially. I should, as a sidebar, should tell you that Hope's two daughters, my stepdaughters, have always looked at the Montgomery Theater as a, as a sibling because we raised them at the same time that we were, we were opening the theater. So it's kind of one and the same and they were around all the time. We're kid friendly. Kristen has, she's, she's not one yet, or no, she is one. She is, she just turned one. So she's there all the time. So she'll be a theater kid and that's, and that's okay by me. I grew up in Montgomery County. I grew up in North Wales, although Sauterton was certainly part of my tromping grounds. But I, I moved away in my twenties to become a, to continue my profession as an actor in Los Angeles. So I was away for some time. A little sidebar story, while I was there in LA, early eighties, I was cast in a film as the stunt double to Robert England. I don't know if that name means any, anything to anybody. Robert England was Freddy Krueger and the Nightmare on Elm Street series. This movie was called Galaxy of Terror. Look it up or don't. It's an awful dreadful film. Was a Roger Corman film who was known as the king of the B films at the time. But being cast, my only association with Robert England was to sit in makeup chair next to him so they could, you know, make us look close to being identical as, as possible. So as a, as a stunt double, I was with the second unit, so I didn't get to be with the director. I got to be with the second director. So I was with the B team, you might say. So that director that I was assigned to was, was an up and coming upstart director who then became known, as you know him, as James Cameron. Coincidentally, years later, I moved back here in eighty-nine and when Titanic opened, it was at the Broad Theater here in Sauterton, Hope, and I saw Titanic at the Broad Theater. James Cameron came to the Montgomery Theater. Never. So that, that never came to pass. Now, even though we started in the basement, we didn't have the whole theater at first. We started in the lower level. There's a, a back entrance that many of you, I think, have seen. We were there for ten years before the borough was really embracing revitalization, the twenty years ago revitalization program. And coincidentally, at that time, we were, we were given notice by the landlord that we had two months to decide if we wanted to take over the entire building or at least the main floor, the engine room, the old engine room for the firehouse and make that the theater. And two months was not enough notice. So they said, well, you know, you have first dibs. If you can't, we have a laminating company that's going to, to take over the space. And we thought laminating company, you know, on Main Street, revitalization. Probably not a good fit to have a light industrial kind of place right in the hollow. So we came to this Borough Council meeting and said, here's what's happening. What do you think? And I, I think it was by the next month, Borough Council said, no, we're not going to let this happen. So unanimously, the Borough Council decided that they were going to, like the term they used to use at the time was friendly condemnation. I don't think that's true anymore. I, I don't know, but the, the friendly condemnation was it's condemned for the property to be used for the public's good. So the borough brought, it was three hundred thousand dollars was the total purchase price. Borough brought two hundred thousand. We were able to muster up a hundred thousand dollars to close and that's, that's how we took over and we've been, we've had a lease purchase for the remainder. We said, we have very little left on that contract, but we're still, still paying that off, but we're, we're, we're close to the end. But, you know, there you have it. So now it became the focal point of revitalization. And we, we fully embraced Sauterton in the community. We went, okay, we're, we're, we're not just fly by night. We're not getting started here for ten years and moving elsewhere. This, this is our home. And as I look back, I think revitalization was, was a great success. I, I think it's a sweet little Main Street, as Dan said in his little introductory, that, you know, this was a worn down little Main Street town. And it's, it's now, it's, it's adorable. The whole idea of revitalization to me was new sidewalks, Victorian lamps, streetscaping. And, and now twenty years later, I'm encouraged to know that the, the borough plans to finally go through with, with new Chestnut Hill parking lot, which will be fantastic. You know, the great thing about that with the success of Third Fridays, now people will be able to drive to town. They'll be able to park in a place that's, that's first class and they can come to the, not only the theater, but to restaurants and to our events, to shop and go that, yeah, this, this Sauterton, this is, this is really, this is a classy town. So in, in closing, not only are we honored to be Sauterton veterans, we're also proud, I mean, I'm deeply touched by this honor of getting the, I, I joke about it, but to, to receive the key to the borough is really, it's, it's something special and I'm, I'm touched by that and I thank you all. Thanks very much.
This is where the whole audience is quiet because there's no good out. There's regulatory. That's incredible. Let's try.
Yeah, the background.
Thank you for doing the graduation.
Thank you. Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Thank you. Flowing through the, you know, it has been a long, long revitalization. We're still working on it, so.
Honored to be a part.
Thank you. I mean, it's traded. I have some air.
Chief. Good evening, Mr. Vice President. I have previously sent out the notes for today because I wasn't sure I get the stats done, but I got them this morning. Including a couple additional notes, just a quick rundown. Thirteen vehicle crashes this month, two injuries, one unfortunately is quite serious. Five arrests, hundred and three traffic stops, thirty-seven situations were issued, eight written warnings, repairs were issued. We assisted other agencies sixty-seven times, twelve hundred and thirty calls for the month, which puts us a little above three thousand for the year. Pardon me. The good news is that our Part One crimes, the more serious crimes, are down thirty percent over this time last year. Minor crimes are up just a little bit, but that's to be expected. And to finish out the notes I'd send in, as you're aware, we partnered with Bus Patrol, as did all the surrounding police departments. We've had a total of ten violations sent to us, five citations have been issued. They have some technical problems, but they've been straightened out. I've contacted Penn Dot to ask them to come out to assist us, particularly on Main Street, coming into the borough from Brantonia, to put in some signage that there's a curve when you come into the borough. That's where we've been having a number of crashes. People aren't recognizing there's a curve there. I also asked them to properly post the speed limits because even I'm confused. And I've asked them to take a look at the traffic lights at Broad and School to work on the timing. Because I don't put it cycling properly. And we also started planning for the first, third Friday today, so in times with our control. And that's all I have for you.
Any questions from the chief?
First, you have a brief solicitor's report in your packet.
Any question for the board? All right.
Public Works Director. Mr. Vice President, I believe there was a, not be able to report that I had, but no. I'll just hit some of the highlights. And looking on the first page, surprise all these, put a lot of hours down at the freight building. But we've also made a lot of good progress. The back wall, that new structural, or that new slab going up on the big building. Walkway there, we had the back wall pretty much done. Now waiting for a few caps and the wall on the street side is pretty much done where we can kind of stop to be able to get trucks in the, pour the concrete up on the deck. That's doing really well. We got the electric into it. We got the water service into that deck to service some of that stuff up there. We, well, we started, we started full swing, mowing the second week of the other month. We had one or more part timers in. And I think we have one or not, maybe two applications from a high school senior that we're kind of looking at to pick up our second part-time person. We had a plate that failed a little bit on Second Street at Central Avenue, had a hole in the street for one night. We got it on the next day and that's repaired. And we are out in brush and also doing leaf collection again. We had a lot of leaves that came back out. We started with that today. Should be pretty close to finishing that up by, by Wednesday. Things are working on. We got a little bit of work to do down at the freight loading end. And that's pretty much set up for try to start pouring a lot of concrete. So we'll finish that up probably tomorrow. We have a couple sewer ladders we're doing a while. We're trying to get the first block of Wild Avenue. Base repair between Reliance and the dock. Little over midway down to the block, past, past the four and all. We have three ladders doing there. I want to do that with the, the base repairs. Trying to get that done before the four and the Sundays. And then of course, next week we'll be starting up the pool. We did a pretty hard in the first week and after that it's fine. Filling it and cleaning up the leaves out, so. A busy man, of course.
Usually.
And we have the, the banner, we'll be pulling up very shortly, the hero banners. We put them up.
No questions from the Public Works Director? And Borough Manager.
In the meeting schedule for May, we have a planning permission meeting this Wednesday, May third, be held in the back conference room. The agenda will consist of a review of the development plan with a proposed Starbucks and a pound of commons development off of East Village Street. And we will also begin its formal review of the proposed subdivision plan at West Reliant Road in Arlington, St. Paul Pike. The work session of Borough Council will be held third Monday in May, I believe it's May fifteenth. Earl. The pool is going to open the weekend of Memorial Day. Memorial Day weekend, the pool will be opening. Memberships are available for sale. We continue to sell memberships. And as the Public Works Director noted, we'll be starting up the season work hopefully next week. Or as the agenda for the ceiling, there are only two business items. First, we have an opportunity to purchase what was a former municipal dump truck. That truck was purchased by CNS Lawn and Landscape. They no longer need the vehicle and have proposed to sell it to the borough for sixty thousand dollars. It's a very clean, very new truck. It was a municipal truck, so it's built for municipal work. And it also includes a snowplow and a salt spreader. The borough will be working to sell an old ten-wheel Ford dump truck at some point in the coming months to help offset that purchase. This was included in our, in our budget. And the price is as, as it was budgeted. So I think it will be a good addition to our, to our fleet. The second item is an authorization to move forward with the advertisement bids for what will be the first phase of renovations to the municipal building. This particular phase includes work in the basement, constructs a new entranceway to the basement and expansion on the back of the building for additional garage space for the police. That will give us a handicapped accessible entrance to the rear of the building. It'll waterproof the basement. It'll move the mechanicals down to the basement. It will clean up the third crawl space that is around the majority of this building. All in preparation for phase two, which will be the renovation of the Police Department itself. But getting the first phase underway will be a major asset to, to the second phase. It will also give us storage space, which we'll definitely need to, to help relocate the police department once we get into the renovation of the, of the station. I do not have a timeline yet, but our architects are indicating that the project is very near ready to, to put out for bid. So as soon as we're able to go, I'd like to work with the architect, develop a timeline for bidding and to get that, to get that moving. Curious to see what kind of pricing we get. And of course, that will come back to Borough Council and see if it's acceptable pricing to, to move the project forward, but it's been long in coming, but we'd like to like to start crawling into this project if, if we, if we can. So that is all I have.
Thank you, Mike. Any questions from the Borough Manager?
I got a question, and it's really probably Steve. I'm reading Steve Toy's report here at the three phase on the freight building. Three phase electrical equipment ordered. Estimated delivery date has been moved to six months to a year. Searching alternatives, no firm date.
Switch gear for the three phase is very difficult to get, so we are searching through our electrical contractors from and a number of other suppliers, but you know, we are concerned that some of that switch gear is going to delay the project, but we'll see what we can do.
Any other questions? The Borough Manager. Committee reporters, do you have any, any reports tonight?
I have two. Okay, so the first report is from the Executive Committee. And we are taking applications for Civil Service Commission. We have two openings and we need an alternate. We have been receiving letters of interest. I wanted to explain a little about what the Civil Service Commission entails, in case anyone's interested here or knows anyone that would be interested. Civil Service, because we have a police force, that's part of the code that we can establish a Civil Service Commission. And the commission consists of three members who have the power to provide for the examination of applicants for positions and promotions, establish minimum qualifications for positions, test applicants for appointments and provide hearings in cases of dismissals or reductions in rank for those employed under civil service status. The commission may also appoint alternates to serve on the commission when a commissioner is absent. So we're going to be taking applications through the summer and we'll probably appoint these members by, by the fall. So just if you want to send the applicant or the letters of interest to myself, to the, to the Borough Manager, Michael, he can get them to the Public Safety Committee. So just making that announcement. And then the next announcement is for the Borough Manager Search Committee. Our person who is running the search, Nicole Beckett, met with Mr. Cole last week and then our committee will meet again on May fourth to just get some logistics together and then we'll have a bigger meeting at the end of the month, May thirty-first. So we're moving along with the Borough Manager Search. And that's it.
Any other committee reports?
I have it for public outreach. We do have our Borough Council office hours for May will be held on Saturday, May twentieth from eleven to one, about in the lobby. And then Borough Council will have a table at the first third Friday, which is scheduled this month.
Anyone else? I just want to mention those four words. Everything's getting ready to get the pool open from the morning, the weekends and into memberships. We're still doing the member only Sundays and we're doing the first hour daily is members only, so twelve to one is members only and after that is going to the general public for daily admission. Fourth, can I have a motion to approve the bills for the month of April twenty twenty-three?
Mr. Vice President, I make a motion to approve the bills for the month of April twenty twenty-three.
Motion in second. Any questions? All in favor? We have a motion to approve the recurring bills for May twenty twenty-three.
Mr. Vice President, I have a motion to approve approval, so pay the recurring bills for May twenty twenty-three.
All second.
Any questions on those bills? All in favor? Next public comment? Do you have any public comments for residents, property or business owners?
I'm here on behalf of Sauter connects. I'm the current president and we have a few of our board members here in our board chairs if anybody has any questions. But we're very proud to introduce you to Jessica Simi, who is our new manager. She just finished her second week and she's diving in the third prize. So let you give that a super.
Yes. Hi, everyone. Some of you I've met and the rest of you I hope to meet, you know, soon. Sorry. Um, I, I'm really, like Lisa said, I'm diving into everything. Everything that's being planned for Sauter connects. But right now, we're really focusing on the third Friday since that's rapidly coming. But I can tell you, we really have a lot of good sponsors already set up. We are still looking for a few. A lot of great vendors that I've been communicating with that are excited that we're coming back this year and we're going to possibly hopefully set up, change the setup a little bit. So we can keep the crowds moving. We were discussing that and we really want to draw them in front of, you know, all of the vendors and everything, not just maybe huddled up at once. We have a lot of great ideas that we're talking about. And you know, if anyone has any other vendors they know, you can send them to the Sauter connects website, the third Friday website actually is probably better or contact me. And but I really am excited and enthusiastic to join Sauter connects and to work with everybody in the town. And I'm looking forward to working with all of you. So if you have any questions, never hesitate. So contact me. Thank you.
Is your, your contact information on the website?
So my contact, I will double check. The word, we have a lot of the emails funneling into the manager at Sauter connects dot com. That's my new email. There were some other additional ones, but they're all funneling through to me. So I receive everything. Mm-hmm. Yep. And then if you call the number, you'll get me as well. So, yep.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Any other questions to Jessica? Any others, public comment? First up is getting approval, the purchase used on purpose with pound salt spreader.
Mr. Vice President, I'd like to make a motion to approve the purchase of a two thousand and six Peterbilt dump truck with snowplow and salt spreader from CNS Lawn and Landscape Incorporated at a price of sixty thousand dollars.
All second.
We have mentioned by Councilor Nunez, seconded by Councilor Wampole, to approve the purchase of two thousand and six Peterbilt dump truck with snowplow and salt spreader from CNS Lawn and Landscape Inc. At a price of sixty thousand dollars. Any questions or comments?
Steve, this is a part of the, the plan. I know we're sound some equipment, right? This is all routine, the budget stuff that we had already talked about earlier this year.
Yeah.
Right? This is part of the grand plan.
And we're going to hold on to our six wheeler for a little bit.
Okay.
Get to the summer and stuff like that. And then we'll find you. That will also be one of the other trucks that will be up there in the end of the year. Report that little body quick. We'll do that in the next.
Any other questions? Okay, a motion in a second? All in favor?
Aye.
Any votes? Next, please. Have you advertised for phase three municipal building renovation phase one? And this is only for, we're only advertising to accept it, not advertising to move forward with the project. So once we get some pricing, the council will discuss whether we're going to move forward or not.
Mr. Vice President, making a motion to authorize the advertisement for bids for the municipal building renovations phase one.
All second.
A motion by Councilor Charlie. And a second by Councilman London to authorize the advertisement for bids for municipal building renovations phase one. Any questions or comments? None? All in favor?
Aye.
Any other things that need to be before the council? Motion to adjourn?
The Vice President, I'm making a motion to adjourn.
One second.